Five, four, three.
It is six thirty P M. And I call this meeting to order. Please stand and we will recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
Of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. This is a regularly scheduled meeting of the Winona City Council. Tonight, we have a special announcement and award presentation. The Winona Human Rights Commission is pleased to announce the recipient of the John A. Latch Award for two thousand and twenty-two, Kathy Sublett, founder of Erase the Stigma. And we'll call up Jacob, the Chair of the Human Rights Commission, to read the press release.
Good evening, members and staff, members of the public. Ms. Sublett founded Let's Erase the Stigma to help individuals with a criminal history, chemical dependency, bad credit, and/or negative medical diagnosis, to move past the shame and to live a life of integrity and dignity. Her motto is, if you make a mistake, fix it and move on. Over the past year, Ms. Sublett and ETS have held numerous expungement clinics in the Winona community. These clinics provide education and resources as well as assisting individuals in filing for and obtaining expungements of eligible criminal convictions. As evidence and statistical data show, persons of color are disproportionately impacted by criminal convictions and the collateral consequences that result exacerbating difficulties finding employment and stable housing. Individuals and other protected classes, including those with mental health and chemical dependency struggles, are also disproportionately impacted by collateral consequences from previous criminal consequences. In addition to the expungement clinics, Ms. Sublett and ETS have held financial literacy courses free in the Winona community to educate Winonans about budgeting. Again, this type of program reduces barriers for protected classes such as individuals who receive or who are eligible to receive public assistance, including other abled individuals and those who may be discriminated against based upon family status. Ms. Sublett's commitment to Winona and the human rights and human rights are evident in her actions and labor toward racial and economic justice. She offers critical lived experience in creating a better community for us all. So, Ms. Sublett.
Go ahead.
Thank you. I would just like to say that I am very humbled by this award because it would not be possible if it wasn't for the community that I serve. I love Winona. I did not anticipate that the programs would have the effect that they're having, and I just appreciate the recognition. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy.
Thank you again. And as the Human Rights Commission Chair, I just want to remind folks that students ages nine through twelve, we are doing our annual essay contest. Deadline is the twenty-third of February. The subject is related to Juneteenth. So check that out on the city website and have a good night.
Thank you, Jacob. Appreciate it. That's all I have for this evening. I'll turn it over to City Manager Chad Ubel.
Mayor and Council, no comments tonight.
Very good. I will now ask the City Clerk to take roll call.
Mayor Scott Sherman.
Here.
Councilmember Young.
Here.
Heima. Christensen.
Here.
Ayden.
Here.
Borzakowski.
Here.
Rapinski.
Here.
For each do you want to?
Public hearing.
Yep. For each public hearing, staff will make a short presentation, then I'll ask if anyone from the public wishes to speak to the matter. Each person needs to clearly state your name and address, and you'll be given up to three minutes to make your testimony. I will call three times for public comments. Once the hearing is closed, the public may not participate in the discussion by City Council.
Item two point one is the Shaw Annexation Petition.
And this evening, we'll have City Planner Carlos Espinoza give a short presentation.
Evening, Mayor and Council. This public hearing relates to an annexation petition for property at two-two-one-eight-nine Pine Crest Road. And it's shown on the screen in red there. It is adjacent to the city of Winona properties which are currently in the city just across the street, Pine Crest. The size of the property is approximately three quarters of an acre, and the petition was submitted by Mark Shaw, who is the present property owner at two-two-one-eight-nine Pine Crest. Annexations are typically accomplished either through annexation agreement, an orderly annexation agreement, or through annexation by ordinance. In this case, staff's or cities, the city's request for orderly annexation was declined. I actually had communication with the township twice in two thousand and twenty-two, once in May and once in October, but there was not a orderly annexation agreement signed. Because the agreement was not signed, we are proceeding now with annexation by ordinance due to the petition from the property owner, Mr. Shaw. And so tonight, following the public hearing, should council concur with the annexation request, a motion to introduce the attached ordinance in your packets would be in order.
Thank you, Carlos. I will now open the public hearing. Does anybody from the public wish to speak regarding item two point one Shaw Annexation Petition? Please state your name and address.
Leon Bowman, I'm Wilson Towne Chair, twenty-two eighty-two seven Garvin Heights Road. We've been through this before. You know, you guys have been sitting on our orderly annexation proposed agreement for almost two years. We wouldn't be in this situation right now today if we'd still be working on it and we had it approved. From what I understand, the decision to not go ahead with the orderly annexation was done by a working group. I have no idea what the authority of a working group is. I asked for minutes. I could not get any. That almost looks like a closed meeting to me, and if it's making decisions for the council, we've got some issues. We should be informed of what's going on with those meetings. It should have come in front of the council, and it should have been up or down, and we'd have been notified. Instead of hearing it, it was just a working group. We've done this. We had a good agreement going, proposed anyway, we thought. We give it to the council. You've had different change in administration. You've had some different people on your council. Well, we've had different new people on our board also. But, you know, we went through, you sat on Sweetwater for thirteen, fourteen years, and finally they had to go through a detachment. Now you got the Booblet situation. On that land, you annexed, and that's a couple of years ago, and nothing's happened there. We're starting to wonder, you know, just what do you want? Why don't you just annex the township?
Thank you, Leon. Does anybody else from the public wish to speak regarding item two point one, the Shaw Annexation Petition?
Howdy, I'm Pat Plaski, two-four, two-four-two Pfeiffer Hill Road, also four-six-four Wilson Street. I'm in Wilson Township, also have property in Winona. I've been involved with governmental relations for forty years. This process seems to be inefficient use of staff, waste of money. And as a resident, I'd like to ask if you're ever going to address a memorandum of understanding and avoid all this. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else from the public wish to speak regarding item two point one Shaw Annexation Petition? Last, one last time, does anybody from the public wish to speak regarding, during the public hearing portion of the item two point one Shaw Annexation Petition? Hearing no, and I will now close the public hearing.
Mayor, I would motion to introduce the attached ordinance for approval.
Second. Motion from George, a second from Steve. Any discussion, comments, questions? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Under the petitions, requests, and communications, item three point one is an appointment to the Human Rights Commission of Miguel Benjamin.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the council adopt the resolution.
We have a motion from Steve, a second from George. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Item three point two is a massage therapy license for Shelley DeVork.
Move that the council approve the license.
We have a motion from Steve, a second from Aaron. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Item three point three is a request to accept the donation from the Winona Area Youth Hockey Association.
Move that the council adopt the, except the, let's see, here we are. Adopt the resolution, I'm sorry. Second.
We have a motion from Steve, a second from George. We do have Brent McClellan and Marty Moran from Winona Area Youth Hockey Association. If you'd like to come up and make a few comments, that'd be great. Tell us a little bit more about it.
I'll be brief and let Marty fill in a little bit more, but
Very good.
My name is Brent McClellan, and I'm at three oh six Liberty Street in Winona. I'm the president of the Winona Youth Hockey Association. You know, this donation is long overdue, and our organization has talked about it for a few years. We've wanted to work hand in hand with the city, public and private donation, to try and, you know, sort of suit our own ends, which is an enhancement of the facility at Bud King for use of, for the youth of Winona and really the entire community. System that we're replacing is twenty-plus-year-old system that's really outlasted its, its good years, and we're happy to make this donation to the, to the city of Winona. We've got a long history of working together, again, to enhance the asset of the Bud King Ice Arena, and the, the board and the association commits to doing that into the future.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members, and other members of the community. Thank you for having us. My name is Marty Moran. I'm at thirteen twenty-nine Skyline Drive in Winona. I'll try to smile a little bit here. My wife always tells me I'm a little bit too serious in situations like this, so if I'm smiling awkwardly, you understand why here. So I'm a member of the Winona Area Youth Hockey Association Board of Directors. I'm also a youth hockey coach in Winona here. And I just wanted to share some of the excitement we have around our organization right now, and, and as this donation comes forward to you, some of the other things that we're excited about within the organization. So we've got about two hundred participants, youth, in the organization this year. About forty percent of that is at the eight and underage group. So we're seeing a really nice spike in our participation at the youth age levels. That would be Learn to Skate, Mini Mites, which is the six-year-old group, and Mites, which is the eight-year-old group. We've got registration open at the moment for a Learn to Skate session this spring, which begins February twentieth. Our Learn to Skate program is free. We provide the equipment, we provide free registration, but we ask that members register with USA Hockey. Everything else is free, and we're really proud of that. We've got twenty-five participants signed up for the Learn to Skate program this spring already, and again, that's open up until it begins on February twentieth. We've also got a lot of focus on just improvement overall within the organization right now. We've got a lot of enthusiastic board members and just members within the, the organization that aren't involved at the Board of Directors level. Couple of things that we've started doing recently is reaching out more frequently to USA Hockey, which is the organization at the national scale that is kind of our governing body, and Minnesota Hockey, which is a more local organization affiliated with so those organizations have a lot of resources available to us in regards to building better programs and, and better systems for our youth, and we're finding a lot of success in reaching out to particularly Minnesota Hockey about our program and then using them as a resource. And it's something that we're, we're really excited about. What's cool about Minnesota Hockey is it takes the USA Hockey approach and it makes it a community model. So hockey is so popular in Minnesota that we, we are lucky enough to have a community-based approach, whereas other areas within the nation, you may have to leave home at a younger age to find good quality hockey. So we're proud to have an organization here in Winona that can provide a quality hockey experience for families and kids, and I'm, I'm happy to be a part of that. Finally, I wanted to invite all of you to attend our Mite Jamboree. We've got that going on this Sunday, the twenty-second, from eight AM to six PM. We'll have about four hundred participants at, from six, six-year-olds to eight-year-olds, participating in cross-ice hockey games. It's a really, really fun, low-key approach to, to hockey. If you haven't participated in something like this, you should, you should come see it. It's, it's a lot of fun to, to watch how the community rallies around our six and eight-year-old hockey players. We've got another exciting thing going on as well. We partnered with Minnesota Hockey Fights Cancer, and we're, we're doing a fundraiser in cooperation with them. The proceeds will go to Minnesota Hockey Fights Cancer as well as the Team Vogel Foundation here locally. So looking forward to that. We've got a big sale. We're raffling off some, some gift baskets, and we've got some big-ticket items like Minnesota Wild hockey tickets. So the event is one hundred percent volunteer run for members within our organization. So it's a really good representation of how we're rallying behind the Bud King Ice Arena site and what that, what that site really means to us as a, as a community. So if you haven't been to Bud King recently, this Sunday, the twenty-second, eight AM to six PM would be a great opportunity to, to come check it out. So hopefully you can make it. Thank you.
Thanks, Marty. Thanks both of you for the work you do in our community, obviously helping the kids out. I recently attended a Learn to Skate with my two and four-year-olds, so you're doing great things over there, and we appreciate the donation thoroughly. Any other comments, questions at all?
I'm just picturing four hundred.
Yeah, holy smokes. Bless you.
I'm checking it out.
It's full of gas. Thank you.
Thanks, guys. Any other comments, questions, discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Item three point four is the temporary license agreement for the Winona Real Estate Fund.
Move that the council authorize the mayor and the city clerk to execute the license agreement.
I'll second that.
We have a motion from Steve, a second from Aaron. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Closed? Motion passes.
Under new business, item five point one is the license agreement for Winona State University Bridges Program.
We'll, council authorize city staff to execute the agreement.
Second. Very good. A motion from Steve, second from George. Any discussion? I want to say real quick, this is a cool program. It gives Winona State nursing students the opportunity to get some clinical experience, and it also helps members of our community, specifically those members of the Friendship Center. So very cool program, for sure. I appreciate it.
I'd like to also say, think I've had the opportunity to use them a few times and see them down at Sobieski Park. Amy Reitmeyer, Kayler, and a few of her people from Winona State. It truly is a very unique opportunity for Winona to take advantage of it. So I'm really proud that we're making this happen.
Absolutely. Thanks, Aaron. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Item five point two is the agreement with WSU Nursing and Health Science Program.
I move that the council ratify the agreement.
I'll second that.
We have a motion from Steve, a second from Aaron. Any discussion?
George Laura, have anything to say or?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So yeah, so this agreement with the nursing and allied health science programs essentially allows us to provide practicum field experience and internship experiences for nursing students, rec tourism students, public health, therapeutic recreation, health and exercise science. We offer about fifteen to twenty placements for students at Winona State every single semester. That's spring, winter, fall, and summer. So this agreement will continue to allow us to provide those experiences at the Friendship Center and within the Parks Direct Department as well.
How long has this been going on? How long have we been doing this?
The Friendship Center has been offering practicum experiences at least since two thousand and thirteen, and possibly longer than that. It's been a really long time. It's been a really great partnership and relationship with our Wellness Center, and then with our other programs and services in our department.
Thanks, Laura. Thanks for working on that. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Item five point three is the Paul Bruin Historic Revitalization Subgrant Program Letter of Support.
I move the council authorize the mayor to execute the letter of support.
I'll second that. Motion from Steve, second from Aaron. Any discussion?
George?
And Port Authority as well supported this letter, so.
Yeah. Lucy, do you want to just comment on the program real quick?
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. This is a grant program through the National Park Service. The city applied last year. We were not awarded funds. They do recommend requesting funds at least twice, so we hope this time around we're able to secure at least a portion of the seven hundred and fifty thousand, and it would be for renovation of historic properties in downtown Winona.
It was both interior and exterior, is what I read?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Steve, did you have a question or comment?
Lucy said what I was gonna say. This, this would be wonderful if we could obtain this grant, making our downtown, these historic buildings, to repair them to historic standards. It's very expensive. And so it'd be, it'd be a great help for, for our downtown if we could obtain the grant, so.
Absolutely. Any other comments, questions, discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Item five point four is the Fee Ordinance for a Correction on Building Permits.
Move that the council introduce the ordinance.
Motion from Steve, a second from Pam. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Item five point five is the Introduction of the Ordinance to Establish the Creative Winona Commission.
Move that the council introduce, let's see, introduce the ordinance, yes.
We have a motion from Steve, a second from Pam. We do have Margaret Shaw Johnson here, who helped lead the task force regarding the direction of the new Creative Winona Commission. Would you mind saying a few words? It came all the way down here.
Thank you. I wasn't really prepared to speak. I'm Margaret Johnson, seven nineteen Main Street. Yes, I've been part of the group that has been working to revitalize this effort and to, to create a new creative commission. So a lot of work has gone into it, a lot of thought. I appreciate the support of the staff and all the people who worked on the effort. I really would encourage the council to adopt the ordinance. Thank you.
Thanks for your work on this, Margaret. Any other comments, questions, discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Item five point six is the Authorization to Request Funding from the State of Minnesota for the Riverfront Trail.
Move that the council adopt the resolution.
Excellent. We have a motion from Steve, a second, and emphatic, second from Pam. Any comments, questions, discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Item five point seven is the Authorization to Request Funding from the State of Minnesota for the Public Safety Facility.
Move the council adopt the resolution.
I'll second that.
Motion from Steve, second from Aaron. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Closed? Motion passes.
And item five point eight is the Public Safety Facility Proposal from BKV.
Move the council approve the BKV proposal to allocate funds from the City Manager's Contingency Fund.
We have a motion from Steve, a second from Pam. Chad, do you want to say a few words, please?
Mayor and Council will walk through kind of the second half of the presentation. I know much of this was, or a portion of this was discussed during the pre-council, but before you tonight, you have a BKV proposal to further study six to eight options with not to exceed amount of eleven thousand five hundred. So again, within your council packet, we lay out the different combinations or options that we are considering. So we are considering, again, central fire station location. This would be combined police and fire, and fire standalone with potential for Winona Area Ambulance Service. So you may ask, well, why are we having BKV do this again? This is what BKV provided for a combined facility at this location in the previous study that was presented to you this last May. So the reason we'll re-look at this location in particular is the combined nature with police and fire. So two factors that, you know, won't take a lot of time for BKV to work through, but one is the parking. You could see in the, in the left image, we, we don't have a, left and right. You don't see a solution for public parking and/or how the street could be used to accommodate parking. We didn't do that in the first iteration, so we're going to look at that as well as if an additional story could be placed in this facility to better accommodate the remaining parcels on that, on that block as they are privately owned. The second piece of central fire is that we did have BKV toward the end of their work, look at a standalone fire facility. Again, we would want the standalone to include space for Winona ambulance service, and then again, readjust any of the parking, green space parcels within this, within the city block. As you can see in the image to the right, there is some private properties that would remain intact with this proposal, but again, we want BKV to go back and readjust this blocking or schematic for central fire, standalone fire facility. We are having BKV look at Central School again. This is between Sixth and Seventh and Walnut and Market Street. This would be a combined police and fire facility or fire standalone with Winona Area Ambulance Service. Again, back in May, BKV looked at this site, provided this detail of a combined facility. Again, why are we coming back with BKV? The idea here is, at that time, we didn't consider, you see the, the staff parking and public parking was eliminated, or was a standalone in this sense where the blue in this image shows the combined nature of the police and fire, but then no resolution for parking. So we would want BKV to look at the possibility of vacation of streets or different parking formulas on the surrounding streets, obviously excluding Broadway. The other piece in discussion with the private property owner is on the south side of the Central School building, is there an opportunity for additional parking spaces? Would that even be a consideration for, if the city were to acquire this parcel, would that be considered? So we want BKV to do a little bit more work on the Central School site, again, for combined and/or standalone for fire ambulance. We are suggesting that BKV further study the Pro Bill Block. We refer to it as the Pro Bill Block. I put it in quotations. That's between Second and Third Streets and between Washington and Johnson. We would ask BKV to look at a combined police and county sheriff facility at this site or a standalone police facility. If you're not familiar with that block, I'll show an image here in a minute. Okay, actually, I can flip to it and come back. This is the, this is the block between Second and Third, Washington-Johnson. The green parcel is owned by the Port Authority. We don't exactly have the, the pointer doesn't quite work, but if you look at the screen behind you, this parcel, this parcel right here, is currently owned by Winona County. And so we are looking at this location for combined police, combined LEC, and then also standalone police. So there's been a lot of questions about the current LEC, about renovation or expansion. Within your council packet tonight, we have the letter from Margaret and Johnson that did the analysis on the possibility of an expansion of the LEC. Again, I, we noted that in the agenda item that, in their review, their opinion is that the expansion is highly unachievable and inadvisable. And again, police needs are not met. What we'd like to, what we place in front of you tonight, we provide to the press and the public. we provide to the press and the public copy of the agenda, and for the public record is, I allude to this in the agenda item, is that we provided Market and Johnson our needs and, and what the police department needs were. And I think there's still some questions about those needs. So we had BKV re-summarize all the work they did in their previous study that was presented to you, to show that these are the things that were taken into consideration when considering the current LEC. So, what's in front of you, again, will be entered into the public record, but I'll, I'll go through a good majority of that summarizing what was given to Market and Johnson, and really why the staff is not recommending the current LEC. So there's really five, what, again, this is the words from BKV. There are five planning topics that are critical in modern police department design. One, providing appropriate space for current and evolving police operations. Two, creating security and safety for the public and the staff. Three, developing operational department flows that support staff efficiency and collaboration. Four, providing training spaces to enhance Winona PD and neighboring jurisdiction proficiency in performing their jobs. And five, staff recruitment and retention. Again, from BKV's summary, the existing law enforcement center was built in 1977, and serves both the county sheriff's office and the Winona Police Department. Since this facility was built over forty-five years ago, there have been many changes that have occurred in police operational procedures and staffing, both of which resulted in a facility that no longer meets the needs of the Winona Police Department. Over the years, the police department space has been adapted to attempt to address such requirements that presented itself at that time. Some of these changes have created safety risks. Number one, the current area utilized by the police department in the county law enforcement center is the entire second floor, totaling approximately 4,800 square feet. The first floor or main level is a small public lobby directing police visitors to the second level, evidence intake and storage, and six pull-in-back out police vehicle bays. In the basement or lower level, the police department utilizes shared areas with the county for staff lockers, fitness area, and training room. Of the total building area, the Winona Police Department currently, currently utilizes approximately 9,664 square feet. The existing building is lacking the areas required for the police department. Some of these areas are interview rooms, adequate report, report writing, and patrol meeting spaces, K-9 and bike patrol space, evidence areas that comply with standards required by the Minnesota BCA, digital forensics, adequate police vehicle parking, which is important based on the items kept in vehicles, locker areas that provide appropriate ventilation and power required for the equipment stored, and training space. The space program that was prepared identified appropriate spaces to accommodate the Winona Police Department now into the future, detailed spaces that totaled 39,145 square feet. The current area used by the police department is 9,664 square feet. The entire basement, lower level, was repurposed for the police, would use, or would add approximately 9,500 square feet, bringing the total usable space to roughly nine thousand, or 19,164. This would leave the department almost 20,000 square feet short of the requirements identified in the space programming. Again, that was presented to the council back in May. With the addition of the new county jail, there is no adequate area in the site to accommodate added area and police parking requirements. Public facilities are expected to last for decades. The space identified is projected to meet the department's need for at least twenty years, rather than a minor fix for immediate needs alone. So what that's saying also is that, to add on the additional 20,000 square feet that's been needed by the space study that was provided, again, the expansion of the current LEC would need to be required. That's when the city staff went to Market and Johnson and got their opinion on expansion of the current LEC. So safety in a police station is critical for public and staff. I think that's something that's also not always addressed, is that we typically talk about the needs of the police department, but remember, this is a facility the public enters as well. The public needs areas for private interactions when dealing with sensitive interviews, and the police staff need areas that provide security. In the existing facility, there's a lack of these types of spaces. Interviews in a police station deal with spaces for individuals being retained in question, which are more secure spaces, and softer interview areas for victims and witnesses to events. The existing facility has none of these. Police planning standards dictate that the facility should have ballistic separation between public and staff, door security, access controls, and cameras. The existing facility has no ballistic barriers that meet planning requirements, and old and outdated security equipment. Three, police facilities, like many facilities, require locating various operational spaces in close proximity to others to promote efficiency of movement and flow. This is true for patrol parking to lockers, to report writing, to evidence, to briefing, as well as flows for detectives to interview, to evidence, to patrol. The current building is split into three different levels, in different zones of the building. The existing configuration does not provide for the efficient operational flow or natural collaboration between the staff that are critical in police communication and awareness. Four, a well-thought-out training plan is essential for a modern police department. Small law enforcement agencies are no exception. Five, recruiting sufficient numbers of qualified applicants to meet the staffing needs of an agency is the most fundamental human resource process in a police department, and the success of the department's recruitment efforts impacts every other function of the agency. So again, BKV is providing this. They have stated that this is meant to be an overview of some of the major space deficiencies facing the Winona Police Department. So, as we mentioned, the staff is not recommending looking at the current LEC. We have begun, as I mentioned in the, in the pre-council, that we have had discussions regarding a combined law enforcement center for police and sheriff. Of course, we are looking at state funding. You have approved the ask, and so that the collaboration between, or the combination of those two facilities could be an option. Again, we would have to have lots of discussion and communication with Winona County about their needs, shared needs, and of course, location. I mentioned in the proposal as well that, and I mentioned this in the pre-council, here's the example that I gave in the pre-council meeting. This is no location but a police standalone. As you can tell, we have a north-south facing facility. We would like BKV to spend some time doing east-west location. Someone may point out, well, you can just turn these ninety degrees and you'll have your east-west location. Doesn't work quite that easily, as you can tell, you've got an elongated, you know, north-south corridor. In the example I gave, if City Hall was an option, you can't flip this ninety degrees and make that work. And so we're asking BKV to do sort of the northwest-east-south configurations for police standalone facilities. Of course, we've left one contingent option in case something comes forward, as I mentioned with private, private property owners. If something would come forward, again, I gave some examples of private properties, or examples of private properties that have come forward that really didn't work for standalone fire specifically due to the railroad tracks and response time, but we did ask BKV to leave space or placeholder in case a location does come forward. Again, with that, any questions that you would have, or discussion?
Pam?
Yes, I have one question. When would BKV provide this further study?
Mayor and Council, BKV has indicated that they believe it will be approximately three months to complete this remaining work. It could potentially be longer, of course, with the county discussion, and, and gathering information about county space needs, and, and really, that discussion could be, could be longer. But the options that are really city-focused without the county are, are approximately three months.
Thank you.
Any other comments, questions? George?
Oh, the police department certainly has expanded from its days here at City Hall. How many here remember when the police department was here, the dispatch center, and the jails? In fact, we still have a couple of remnants of jails yet. But Chief, it's totally went way to the next level several times, which it had to with the changing of societies and things. So, but this at one time was the police station, and this could have been a courtroom, too. It are all in one. Thank you.
Thanks, Bruce. Jeff?
So, just, I'm coming in the middle of this. Obviously, this is all, you know, a process that's been going on for quite some time. Couple of comments, though. You, you mentioned in this letter that the current square feet, or the current square foot usage that the police department has is about 9,664 square feet. And then we're asking for, and their recommendation is that, in the future, we're looking, the need is now 39,145 square feet, so it's four times larger than what we're currently utilizing now? So I, it's, that strikes me. I'm not, I'm not debating it. I'm just, that's, anything that's a four times, you know, larger is significant. I think, couple of things, I've had a few people contact me in regards to this, you know, I think, I think, and based on the meeting that I attended here, just sitting in the audience previously, I think there's a desire to look at, without a question, we have clear direction, to look at a way to do something together with the, the Sheriff Department. I know we're doing the grant to do that, and that's, I think, by far and away, the, the option that has the most support within the community, and makes the most sense. Although there may be two separate facilities, there's a lot of overlap. I think that can happen, where, where parts of the facilities, and certain things can be shared to economize. I think, lastly, is just my personal comment and things. I think in life, there's a difference between wants and needs. And I think if you ask anybody, you know, what kind of house would you want, we can, we can all put together some, some, some great things. But in this situation, it's finding the balance between those wants and what, what is needed, and what can be afforded. So I kinda, I have no particular conclusion to any of that, but I just, things that are, as I sit and listen to this and look at this, you know, we'll, we'll learn more, I think, from the study, and that will rule some of the things out and some of the things in, and we'll go forward as we gather the information. And eventually, I believe that if you put some faith into gathering the information, the path will become clearer over time. So I look forward to that. Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff. Any other comments or questions?
Mayor and Council, excuse me, this is Bruce Schwartzman. Can I provide one comment real quick?
Yes, you may. Thanks, Bruce.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. So, to answer the councilman's question, the largest pieces of the program that were added, that were previously identified, is this indoor squad garage. And so in our cold climate, with, with the things that are stored in the, in the vehicles, there's really a, it's a better application to store those vehicles inside. So, there's a, a, a certain amount of the program that is, is for indoor secured squad garage. The other component that, that led up to that roughly 39,000 square feet is training capabilities. The police department currently has no training facilities whatsoever on-site, or in, or in, or in the city Winona. This was providing for that. So there's almost 20,000 to 22,000 square feet of, of area that currently doesn't exist at all for the police department. Hopefully, that helped.
It does. So, so just to clarify, Bruce, so the, the indoor squad car area ballpark, what, what type of square foot is you looking at there?
Um, Councilman, off the top of my head, but I want to say it was about 12,000 square feet.
Okay.
And that also included some K-9 area and some other things.
Okay. And then, so you're looking at maybe around eight ballpark? Again, I'm not holding you to anything. I'm just trying to get a sense for the training aspects of things.
Exactly, exactly. Eight to nine for that. So, so the department probably did about double, but it didn't quadruple.
Okay. Thank you. Helped, that helped.
My pleasure.
Thanks, Bruce.
My pleasure, Mayor.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Item, item 7.1 is council concerns.
We will start with Council President Borzakowski.
Thank you, Mayor. This afternoon at our Winona Housing and Development Authority meeting, there was unanimous vote that James Kirk returns as vice chairman, and myself as chairman. And our other board members are Matt Hazelton, Jay Palmer, and Margaret Walsh. So, we're set to serve another year. Thank you.
Thank you, George. Councilmember item?
Yes, well, if you have not yet taken advantage of the chance to comment on Winona's proposed new comprehensive plan, you have another chance tomorrow afternoon. Show up at the Winona Senior High at 4:30, or four o'clock? Okay, well, I think it is 4:30. To take a look at the work that's been done to, to set out some new ideas and, and some new opinions about what we should do in Winona. And your opinion does matter, so please come to that. I think there's one more, there's one more chance in a couple of weeks. So, stay, stay tuned.
Thank you, Pam. Councilmember Yum?
Nothing this evening, but thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Pinsky?
Mayor.
And I don't remember which order I did last week. Did I hit you first? Do you remember?
Doesn't matter. I don't have anything tonight.
Okay. Councilmember Heima?
Just a couple of things. I had a couple of people contact me in regards to our kind of free-form discussion on community gardens last week, and we talked a little bit after we agreed to support the High Wathah Valley Ed, or the High Wathah Valley Mental Health proposal. There was some discussion of placement of some of the resources the city already has on a temporary basis, perhaps at Madison School. And I, and one of the things that I just wanted to assure folks is that, and, and as people contacted me, there was a fear that the gardens wouldn't go in there and preclude anything else. And that was never part of the discussion. Pickleball courts, basketball courts, playground equipment and what have you are still, without a question, a high priority, not only for a Madison School, but also playground equipment to replace what was, what was taken out of Lake Park at Lake in Dakota as well. So, just wanted to clarify, that was a discussion. Gardens may or may not go in there, but the other things are, remain a priority. So, thank you.
Thank you, Jeff.
Under the consent agenda, there are three items. The approval of the minutes from January 3rd, a claim against the city by Morgan Gish, and a claim against the city by Progressive Insurance.
Council approve the consent agenda.
Second that.
Motion from Steve, second from Pam. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Being 7:17, I move we adjourn. 7:17 PM.
I need a second.
Seconds.
There we go.
There we go.
Boy, we were gonna be here all night. Motion from George, second from Steve's. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.